Thank you, everybody. We're going to call the order. The Grand Forks City Council Meeting Monday, November 15th, 2021. Can I get a roll call, please? Marine?
Weigel?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber? Mock?
Here.
Gavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
And Veen?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Adam, 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
1.3, Mayor's Announcements. We touched on this just at the Growth Fund, but was out at the North Dakota Special Session, ended up being a very successful special session for Grand Forks between Natural Gas and the University, Maryfield Hall. Some really big things coming. You can definitely thank the governor and his team and the legislators on the Natural Gas side, as well as our local legislators, for really bringing a big chunk of those ARPA funds back to Grand Forks. So that's pretty exciting. We have an update today on the Fu Fang Group, which is currently in town. The chairman and some high members of their staff, as well as their site selection team is in town this week. We had some meetings already today. That'll continue through the rest of the week as we work towards a development agreement to further this project along. But very exciting. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to see it in the newspaper. You'll get a much thorough briefing here shortly. We had the grand opening in Hugo's, which was pretty exciting. I've already been there a few times for lunch since. I think that's a real game changer downtown. Every time the governor comes here, he tells us that the highest-priced real estate is whatever's above a Whole Foods the last five years. We don't have a Whole Foods, but we got something above a Hugo's. So it's a good start, and it looks really great. So kudos to them. I was out for a Veterans Day service out at the University of North Dakota, at their Gorecki Alumni Center. Got to spoke with Speaker alongside with Colonel Curry and President Brigadier General, retired Armicost. Just want to say one more time, thank you to our veterans. We also have the State of the Base. So many of you are out there, too, with Colonel Curry. Lots of great things happening there. Lot to be excited for, and the commander of the 319th Reconnaissance Wing, Colonel Curry, is, I don't know what the correct term in the Air Force is, but he's a rock star, and we're happy to have him in the community. Special, want to give some special recognition today. I don't think he's here, but Dr. Walls, our county and city health officer, just received an award in his day job as the North Dakota Family Physician of the Year. So we can give, he's not here, but let's give Dr. Walls a round of applause. And lastly, Mr. Luntz here to talk about the academic development play as well, but also the CTE Center continues to move towards its funding goal. I think it's over 9 million or very close to 9 million, nine tenths of the way that's there. It's over 9 million now. He's giving me the, either he's giving me the thumbs up for talking about it, or it's above 9 million. So that's pretty exciting. Obviously, a lot more work to do, a lot of work to figure out how to keep that sustainable. But man, if we were sitting there a month or two ago and with zero, and now at 9 million, it's pretty exciting, and I'm pretty confident we'll get there. With that, that's all I've got for Mayor's Announcements. So we'll move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1, State of North Dakota Proclamation for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2021.
Thank you. And this is really in line with the governor's proclamation as well. So I want to thank Greta Sileski and Katie Moss for editing and making it ours. So Proclamation, Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, November 13th to the 21st, 2021. Whereas for nearly 30 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. And whereas Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is held each year the week before Thanksgiving, serving as an important reminder that many children, families, seniors, and veterans experience lack of food or safe, stable place to call home. Whereas in the United States, there are over 51,000 people that are facing hunger, in which nearly 16,000 are children. And then as of January 2020, North Dakota had an estimated 541 people that were experiencing homelessness. And whereas we recognize that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in the city of North Dakota, whereas there are many local Grand Forks organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness. Now therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, hereby proclaim the week of November 13th to the 21st, 2021, as Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, and I encourage all citizens to not only recognize that many people do not have housing and are in need of food support, but volunteer and connect with a local nonprofit in our community. Take the time during this week to volunteer, donate, or educate. Thank you.
2.2 is Fu Fang Group Update and Overview.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the council, thank you for having me here this evening to do a bit of an update on the exciting announcement. Mr. Brandon Bonback and I were very pleased to join you and Mr. Phelan with the Grand Forks Herald a little over a week ago and chat with them. And we announced on, collectively, a week ago Saturday, that Grand Forks has been selected as a new home, Fu Fang USA. A tremendous investment in our community. I'd like to just walk through that a little bit. I'm going to share the microphone with Mr. Phelan. I'm going to give an overview of the company and what they'll be doing here and some of the critical things that they needed in place in order to move forward with the community. Mr. Phelan will talk a little bit about the infrastructure investments that are being made and will be made and are necessary to support the project. And I'll wrap things up talking a little bit about the support that the community and state or others are providing to bring this project home. So as was reported in the Grand Forks Herald, we believe that this, the Fu Fang USA project is, that was announced as the largest private investment in Grand Forks County. We thought a lot about what that could be. A Grand Forks Air Force Base is not a public entity. It's the United States of America. All True Hospital is a bit of a nonprofit, so we couldn't come up with one, and we do strongly believe this is the largest investment. As the mayor mentioned, we are fortunate to be joined by a team in Grand Forks this entire week, including the chairman of the Fu Fang Group, the president of Overseas Development, which is really leading this project in terms of site selection, and again, chosen Grand Forks, and their chief operating officer of the American company Fu Fang USA, who has been a big partner in that as well. Fu Fang Group is a, Fu Fang Group Limited is a global leading bio-fermentation company. They were founded in 1999, and they are listed on the Hong Kong Stock Exchange. In terms of what they produce, a number of products here, but really, at the end of the day, they are in the animal nutrition, food and beverage, pharmaceutical, health and wellness, oil and gas, and other sectors. And they have strategic customers that you would recognize, including Nestle, Kraft, Heinz, Cargill, Ingredion, Halliburton, and Baker Hughes. So again, names that you had mentioned. They've been doing business in the United States for quite some time, and they are extending their footprint in North America at their Grand Forks site. Fu Fang Group will build a wet corn milling facility, and ultimately, you see the different products they will produce, but at the end of the day, it's animal and livestock feed. As I mentioned earlier today, and I think there might only be two people who didn't hear this just a few moments ago, but they will be taking inputs from our regional egg producers, i.e. corn, and they will be producing products that will help them as well, long We, in terms of employment, we think this is a tremendous benefit to the region, so they'll be building their facility. I'd like to start construction in late spring or early summer and take about two and a half years to build, and we estimate that there will be 1,000 construction jobs associated with that project, with a payroll, a direct payroll in this region of $41 million. Once operational, both phases, we estimate, and they estimate, that there'll be 233 direct jobs that will be employed at the facility. In addition, agribusiness is one of the largest sectors in terms of indirect and induced jobs, particularly indirect. And we estimate, through some of our demographers and some of our economic multiplier folks we work with, that there'll be 525 additional jobs that will be created, for a total of once fully operational, both phases of 750 jobs in our community and nearly $47 million of direct payroll. We took an extra step in terms of schoolchildren, and we'll talk about this a little bit later on, in terms of benefits from a property tax standpoint. But based on those numbers, a direct employment at the plant, we think that there'll be over 50 additional school-aged children in our community, which could be a significant uptick of revenue for the, for the school district as well. So Fu Fang Group took a look at a number of areas across the United States. I'll talk about that a little bit more, but these are some of the key considerations. When they were looking for their North American presence, they were looking at a site that needed to be around 400 acres, 400 acres. They found 370 in Grand Forks contiguous. Corn feedstock, they needed to be in an area that produced corn. They took a look at a number of areas around the 45th parallel we learned today, and that's where a lot of the corn is grown regardless of the continent. So Grand Forks was a good location for them. Natural gas, these numbers don't mean a lot to most people. They mean a little bit more to me today than it did a year ago, but my understanding is that this is 36,000 decatherm per day is what the city of Grand Forks consumes in natural gas. So this is doubling the natural gas production or usage in the city of Grand Forks. Mr. Phelan will talk about water, but $6.6 million of, pardon me, water per day. Wastewater, you see the numbers there. Electricity, they'll be producing a lot of their own, but they'll have an electric demand. One of the requirements is that they be on a rail line, 50 inbound and 180 outbound cars per week of rail. And road transportation is significant, as well with 877 inbound and 403 outbound trucks per week. They needed a community and a region that could support that, and they found that in Grand Forks. Want to talk just a little bit about how we got here. This opportunity initially came to the EDC, to the community, through the North Dakota Department of Commerce. They had originally taken a look at 50 sites and did significant analysis on 25 sites when they took that first cut. So we submitted an RFP to the state that ultimately landed in the hands of the company in June of 2020. By October of 2020, their first visit to Grand Forks, we had been, now, there were four sites that were viable, obviously, Grand Forks as well. That site visit was really focused on the infrastructure and the ability of that site to serve the project. A lot of discussion about all the things that I just went over in terms of our ability to serve. They came back in March of 2021. At that time, they were down to three competitive sites, and that one was less about the infrastructure. We had talked about it a little bit and some of the support, but really was to get to know the community and to really make a decision on whether this is a community that they felt comfortable in and would like to make that investment. Happy to report that the answer to that was yes. They came back in July 2021, just a few months ago. We were one of two at that time. And really kind of finalizing some of the understanding, expectations on the infrastructure and some of the support that could be provided. And I was pleased in November, or it may have been late, late October, I was at the Northern Valley Correx Bowl when I got a call from the mayor. He had a little bit of fun with me, but ultimately then told me that they were coming. So really pleased to get that call. This is my last slide here before I turn it over to Mr. Phelan for a while. In terms of the project location, this is in north Grand Forks. This would be north of Simplot and Philadelphia Macaroni. So the southern boundary is 27th Avenue North currently. It's a gravel road, if you can imagine that, north of Red River Bay Refinery. It's bound on the west by the Glasson Sub, the rail line, bound on the north by 40th Avenue North. And then it doesn't quite go to Old 81 because there are businesses that border that, but that's the general, that's the area in town that they intend to acquire and to construct their project over the next two and a half years. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Phelan to talk about some of the infrastructure work that's being done and will need to be done.
Mayor Bochensky and members of the city council. As I said earlier at the Growth Fund Committee, obviously, corn's really important on this. The other part is really infrastructure. And the city of Grand Forks, it is true to say that we have the heaviest lift to get this project done beyond the group themselves that want to deliver this. So as part of this, we are working with Mr. Glass, that he's, so everything we speak up tonight, whether it's tax incentive-related, state support, or how we're going to serve them from an infrastructure perspective, is being developed into a development agreement. And as part of that development agreement, it'll spell out how we're going to serve them, what's the grant share, what's their cost share, and how that cost share will end up through rates or through special assessments. So we're going to try to get you at least a draft agreement so you can start seeing the outlines of how we're really specifying how we're going to serve them and what the rate impacts are and how they're going to share in the cost shares in the various areas. So you will see that sooner rather than later, and hopefully as soon as December. I just want to go over how we're going to serve them. And so I think, again, we would not have been in the running for this particular project without significant regional facilities that we have in the city of Grand Forks. And I would say that's water, that's wastewater, that's transportation, that's stormwater, and that's finally also probably our solid waste landfill. So without having those robust regional facilities, we wouldn't be able to serve industries like this day to day. Because much like a city, there's things that happen day to day, and if you don't have robust facilities that can serve these, you're going to have some really bad days. So we should really take heart that we do have some robust facilities. The first part is on the water side. This facility, on average, is going to do 6.6 MGD. And Mr. Weber, at an earlier Growth Fund meeting, says the good thing about industries like this, similar to JR Simplot, they're pretty steady. And so when we say they're 6.6, they're going to be between 6 and 7 million gallons per day. It's not like a residential unit where you got to be worried about peaks. So when we say they're going to be there, they are going to be there because this is all about processing. It's not about sprinkling and that sort of thing. We've gone through several different ways to serve them. Over this last year, we started from potable water. We went to raw water. We went to wastewater reuse. And I think right now, we've landed on a concept of how to serve this particular facility. It is a food-grade product, so they're not interested in our wastewater reuse. They were not interested in the potable water because they're going to have substantial treatment on their site, and so we really landed on a raw water component. So our raw water intake is down by the river, on the forks of the river down here. And what our intent is, that we're going to go to the State Water Commission, and we're going to ask for permission to draw with this industry that 6.6 or 7 million gallons per day from our raw water intake. Right now, it's rated at 24 MGD. It has a capacity that it can go up to 40 MGD with additional pumps. So as part of, the first improvement as part of this project will be to add two pumps to our raw water intake that will deliver eight MGD additional water through our intake. This transmission line is already in place. This transmission line currently is, because it was switched over last year with the new water treatment, it's already serving raw water. So we're going to have more raw water transmitted down that transmission pipeline. At a water treatment plant, we're going to build a pump station, and that pump station is going to pump the water north to the facility, to the Project Peony site. And it's going to be, right now, we're planning a dual transmission line. So not only can we serve them with a redundant pipeline, but we can also serve that whole agribusiness park with, with raw water or theoretically with treated water from our treatment facility. So that's what we're going to do. So it's going to, the lines aren't in here, but there'll be two dual lines that will go to this particular site. All told, that's about a $16 million, $16 million project cost to do all those three different maneuvers, you know, from the two pumps to the pump station to the transmission lines. We have been in contact with the North Dakota Department of Water Resources, which answers to the State Water Commission. We are going to submit an application here by the end of the year that will be heard by the State Water Commission at their February meeting. At the February meeting, we will, we'll line out how we're going to propose to serve this industry. We will also ask for a 60% cost share. Right now, the state of North Dakota has a cost share for municipal water supply projects, like the one I just described, at 60%. So we anticipate receiving a 60% grant for this municipal water supply. The remaining 40% of that cost share will be embedded into the development agreement so that Fu Fang Group will pay on a rate basis through our Water Enterprise Fund is how we're going to plan to serve them. On the wastewater side, the wastewater side is the biggest lift in this particular way. As you recall, we were, we were talking about $44 million to do all the wastewater improvements over the next 10 years. And so with this particular project, we got to do those all in three years. We've got to get all those improvements done in this timeframe. And so when we were talking to you about our wastewater master plan, we, we thought theoretically, hey, if this project moves forward, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do all this all at once, and we are going to have to do all those improvements at once. And we'll bring that back and highlight some of the things we talked about with you previously. That was the important part of, as you recall, we use about $7 million of ARPA have been set aside for our wastewater treatment plant, and then the county also shared $3 million of their ARPA funds. So that's that $10 million. That's really writing down that $44 million investment. Again, similar to the water side, this industry is going to use 3 million gallons per day of wastewater. So that's, that's a lot because Simplot is at 2 million gallons per day. So this is a substantial wastewater user in our community. But again, any process they use in our wastewater treatment plant, they'll pay a wastewater rate for that. So that, again, will be embedded into our rate. The other large part of that, to get us to the 66 million, we're going to have to do a lot of underground work on the wastewater side. There'll be a wastewater pump station that will be embedded in, on the site. There'll be collection lines. There'll be force mains to get it out to the wastewater treatment plant. Currently, we have a force main that goes right by this particular site, and what we've determined is, that's a 1958 to 1962 line, is that we're going to replace that line or we're going to add another line so that we have a redundant transmission line, force main, that'll go to our wastewater treatment plant. We just feel with that, that single point of failure, we should add a redundant line on that, that not only will serve this agribusiness area, but for the community, just because it is an older line, and none of us want a single point of failure. So that's embedded in those numbers also as we move forward. On the, on the stormwater side, there'll be a variety of different stormwater things that we'll have to do as part of the project. Some of the highlighted transmission or transportation improvements that we'll have to make, this is 27th that goes to the southern border of the facility. This is 42nd, right here. This is North Washington or Highway 81. So we have paved this road to Red River Bay Refinery, and then we're going to have to pave the road all the way to Highway 81 in this area. Also, we'll likely have to have intersection improvements at Highway 81. So right now, it's a three-lane section. If you go, if you drive out there, we're going to extend that all the way to Highway 81. So that will allow them to have a left-hand turning radius. It will allow for two lanes of traffic, and we're also going to look at how we can have some, maybe some parking because there's going to be a lot of trucks coming in and out of here. Again, we've taught, we have had some initial meetings with the North Dakota DOT regarding what we're planning to do in this from a regulatory perspective, but also from a perspective of, of how they could help cost share on some of these improvements, especially those around Highway 81 that are their improvements. And there's also some additional programs where we can seek some funding for 27th Avenue North, too. Again, whatever the local cost share that we can't support locally, those will be as part of special assessments, and then we'll go to the property owner, and obviously, the Fu Fang Group is a large property owner, and that will be a special assessment of that. Generally, that's, that's kind of the water, wastewater, stormwaters suite of activities. With all of these, the city of Grand Forks holds permits on the, on the water supply side. We hold industrial pretreatment permits on the wastewater side. We hold some stormwater permitting on the city side. They'll also likely need a state permit on the stormwater side. On the transportation side, we will have to work with the DOT on what we're doing in that. So there'll be some collaborative opportunities on that. I looked at this, the low end and the high end, we had a low end of serving this industry at 85 million and a high end at 104. Just adding up the numbers based on how we're going to plan right now to treat them with raw water, we're probably around that $93 million that we'll put into a development agreement, and we'll have the different cost shares and how they're going to pay versus rates versus special assessments. You'll start to see that soon here in, in December. The other thing that has come up, too, they'll have a broad permitting that they'll have to do with the state of North Dakota, beyond what they have to go through with the city of Grand Forks. There'll be air permits that they'll work with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality and several other different permits that they'll have to have above and beyond what we require as a city of Grand Forks. So with that, I'll turn it back to Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Before I run through this, I want to just highlight a couple of things. First of all, as you can imagine, I might have mentioned it earlier, that when you're taking a look at 50 sites and then down to 25, and ultimately, one of two, this is a very competitive process. And the city of Grand Forks was not the only community that was vying for this and really wanted this project. I was really glad to get the call that I got, not the other one, when we were one of two. When they were here in July, when the company was here in July, they kind of outlined what our competitive advantage were and maybe where we weren't as strong. And one of the things that they mentioned is not monetary, but I think it was strong enough for them to mention it, and I'm proud of it, and I hope you will be, too. And I'm reading from their presentation, "Community feel and government local business partners," partnerships. So I think they recognize the way this community collaborates. I've said many, many times that collaboration is our calling card, the way that the city and the county and other tasking entities work together. Businesses come to the table. The state of North Dakota is a true partner in development, and we're open for business and looking for ways to get to a yes, obviously, doing things with the proper diligence, but looking for a way to promote business. They think they felt that, they felt that very strongly. I want to recognize a few people before I get into this. Number one, the team at the EDC, so the folks that work in my office, really blessed. Brandon Bonback, who really was pointing on this for 16 months. At the end, the mayor was really carrying the ball over the goal line, but Brandon Bonback coordinated countless meetings, you know, gathered reams of information, and just really professionally represented this community, the state, or organization very well. Workforce is a key concern to everyone, including this project, and we can talk about that a little bit if you'd like. Becca Krueger from my staff really was a resource for them and will continue to be a resource, helping to navigate some of the existing programming, help to think through how you're going to staff that. Mr. Phelan and really the mayor, bringing, as I mentioned right at the end, I agree wholeheartedly, shoots and scores Mr. Jacobs' article, so that was fantastic to see. And just really, I think it was a great team effort and one of the most rewarding things that I've been involved in something like this, so thank you much. Okay, business support programs. As you, as I mentioned, it's very competitive, and we need to bring a competitive proposal to the table to win this. I'm going to talk about the details of the payment in lieu of taxes in a minute, but this is something that has been discussed, but not only with, you know, leadership within the city, but also with the other tasking entities, too. $10 million in state natural gas infrastructure. The mayor talked about it in his opening remarks, but the state of North Dakota, the city of Grand Forks did well. The state of North Dakota approved $150 million to support the expansion of natural gas from western North Dakota to eastern North Dakota, which was, will be fantastic asset for us in the future. There's $10 million of that proposal that is targeted to this project to support natural gas. The other site was essentially right on top of a natural gas line, so they didn't have that expense. So that was something that we really needed to do to bridge the gap. Again, the community and the state working to get something done. I want to recognize our local legislators who really carry the ball, as well as always, our Senator Appropriations Sherman, Senator Ray Holmberg, who has always got his finger on the pulse. I want to congratulate and thank them as well. Mr. Phelan talked about state cost share for infrastructure, raw water intake and others, so that final number is yet to be determined, but the state is going to be a partner in this. City of Grand Forks off-site infrastructure investment. In hindsight, I wish this wasn't on this slide. Mr. Phelan talked about it a little bit. It is not an incentive. These investments will be recaptured through rates, will be recaptured in special assessments, but nevertheless is put on this page to illustrate the investment that the community is making and the partnership that's necessary to be successful in this endeavor. $3 million county support for wastewater infrastructure. It was reported, but the city of Grand Forks and the county of Grand Forks, they were only the city and the county to participate in ARPA funds in the entire city of North Dakota. Again, I think I've said it before, but I really want to thank and congratulate both parties for recognizing that this has a benefit beyond, you know, the dollars. Number one, this helps rates be competitive for Fu Fang, but number two, this helps rates competitiveness for existing and new industry as well. So the investment is well thought out, and really, again, want to congratulate and thank the county. Corporate income tax exemption, that's made available by the state. That's available to any primary sector business that is expanding into or within or to the state. Sales and use tax exemption for billing materials and equipment. State of North Dakota puts a little bit of a plus up for agribusiness projects based on the importance of ag to our historical economy. So there is a property tax exemption for equipment as well as construction materials. New jobs training dollars, so the state of North Dakota does provide training resources for new companies that are expanding. And again, Mr. Krueger will be a benefit in helping the company navigate that. And then the North Dakota Pace Program. You've seen those before, but just wanted to highlight that even though we're giving you an overview now, Mr. Phelan talked about a development agreement. I'm going to talk about a pilot in a minute, but there'll be pieces of this that'll be coming to you over the next shorter term. Property tax benefit. So it has been discussed with the company and with leaders within a political subdivision of the community, is a property tax, payment in lieu of tax as a pilot of 20 years, where the first year would be exempt at 90%, so that those taxing entities would receive 90% of what would normally be realized. In years 11 through 20, that would be a 75% exemption, or 25% of the taxes would be realized. realized. Taking a look at this chart, at full freight, phase one would be at $5.9 million for all taxing entities. Phase two, a little over 2.4. And by the way, these estimates were developed internally, based on some of the information they shared, our estimate on what the value that would be. The company is trying, is going through the engineering process now, and will determine those, those final estimates. So this is our best attempt to try to illustrate what this would look like. So 10% payment for phase one, I'm going to focus on that, is $590,000 to all taxing entities. That's new money for all taxing entities. And in the second 10 years, 1.45, almost 1.5 million dollars of new revenue to taxing entities that aren't being realized today. So, under the category of, what's it mean to me? We took a look, it broke that down for each individual taxing entity, and have had some conversations with leadership. So based on phase one, we believe that the school district will realize in new taxes for phase one, just under $190,000. The city, a little over 180, 182.9. County, just under 150,000, and the park district, a little over $70,000. So there's that $590,000. Taking a look at over a 25-year period of time, so the first 10 years is at one rate, the second 10 is at another, we believe that the school district will receive 19.5 million, city almost 19 million, and you can see the other numbers there. You take a look at those annual proceeds on average, now keep in mind that they're lower at the beginning, and they increase as time goes. 720,000, school, city, just under $700,000. And then annual proceeds after the 25-year period of time is 2.6 to school district, 2.6 to the city, just a few dollars difference. County, just a little over 2 million, and park district, new million dollars for 8.3 million of additional revenue that is not being received today. That is the end of the presentation, but I am, thank you for the support that the community has provided in developing this project, the city staff, consultants of the city. It's been a real team effort, and really excited to make this announcement with the mayor, and I'm sure he, or I, or Mr. Phelan will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. I think, you know, one of the big conversations, and I know we've already had it with Mr. Veen, is going to be water. And I see this project really highlighted and kind of got some excitement behind the natural gas pipeline. And we already have a project going with the Red River Valley Water Supply that's, that's being funded, but funding, funded slowly. So I really see projects like this highlighting the need for that, and years like this past year in the drought highlighting the need for that. And if you have a project like this, that gets the Red River Valley Water Supply moving quicker, that protects our citizens, and not only industrial users, but residents to be able to access the water. So hopefully, hopefully it'll work in the same way the gas did, and speed up that, that funding for that project, but another, another piece of the puzzle to highlight. Thanks. Mr. Veen, you already got your mic on.
Yeah, but on a different topic. You know, listening to this, it's really an accelerated timeline to, to get this done, and a lot of work has to be done in a short period of time, is what I'm envisioning. It sounds like they want to be under construction early this next year. I think one of the issues is, have we put together kind of like, more or less, a critical path timeline of all the things that have got to be done, the timelines by which they have to do, the decision-making process? And I guess I'm, I have a lot of questions, but I don't, I'm not going to get into them all here, so that we have ample time to ask the questions that we need to, because I'm going to think some of that, or much of that, has to be a part of the development agreement. I would, I imagine the development agreement may be one of the single most important documents that we're going to have to do, and we're going to have to do that fairly quickly, and try to address all the questions we may have with all the impacts and stuff like that. So have we worked on something like that, and can, how can we make sure we're hitting this ahead of the game, instead of trying to ask questions late, and, and so we don't have holdups?
Mr. Phelan, you can probably answer a lot better than I. And I know tomorrow, there's, that they're spending a full day over at A to us, and actually setting up shop there. A lot of this has been pondered in the last year and a half, which is, which is helpful, but now it's real. So what's, what say you, sir?
Mayor, and Mr. Veen, as you well know, you know, in probably the most similar time period in the city was, you know, post-flood, when we had, we added to a lot of infrastructure in a short amount of time. So I think in a similar vein, the city is going to have to do something similar over the next two construction seasons. So, and I said earlier, we had, we had the opportunity to see Chairman Lee from Fu Fang Group earlier today, and he did say, you know, China's used to building $300 million worth of infrastructure in six months. And, but he also said he understands he's in the United States and has to comply with American rules and regulations. However, two years is, means that we really have to have our, to be a really fine-tuned engine. So I think for Grand Forks, from an engineering perspective, we will have project coordination on all those different infrastructure pieces. We're going to have to have all of our local regional consulting firms engaged, and I think maybe even on the national front, specifically related to our wastewater treatment plant, because we're going to have in our, into our waste stream, we're going to have corn, we're going to have potatoes, we're going to have sugarbeets, and we're going to have domestic waste. And there's not many places you're going to find in the world that has those four things, and ask a wastewater treatment plant to treat it, and then deliver it to the Red River. So I think with that, we're going to have to have a whole team that will have to deliver this, similar to what, what they're doing, as we, so we really do have to work in parallel. We've had some meetings, I think tomorrow is really that kickoff of how we're going to do that. That development agreement has to come back, and then you're going to have a series of agreements that are going to have to come forward. And before I start bringing those agreements back, I want to make sure that the city council concurs on how we're going to, you know, execute and deliver this project.
If I could, I mean, I mean, there's just so many. Making sure our wastewater plant, just as you stated, has all these different flows into it. What's its capacity? Because each type of waste has to have the right treatment to, to address it. So, you know, those air, air quality is going to be, what's the impact to our transportation system? The number of trucks coming in, and the access it's going to do with the roads, it's going to do with the number of trains, cars that are coming in. I mean, all those are real impacts to the community, and I think if we address them correctly, it'll be great. If we don't, it'll be problematic. So I think a lot of that pressure's back on us, to make sure we do it right.
I think Mayor Botenski, I think what we're, I was trying to say, too, is, Mr. Lund likes to focus on the tax incentive, property tax. Well, that's really the easy button. That's just because you're living and breathing, you get, we really have the work to do on this. And as I've always said with these agri-business, without cities like cities of Grand Forks, these projects don't move forward, because we just highlighted all the challenges we're going to have over the next two to three years. It is incredible. However, we have terrific facilities, we have really great staff, and we have really good consultants that are all going to have to come together and really deliver in a short amount of time, and that's what this company's going to expect out of us.
And if I could, the last thing, be one thing that you mentioned, and that is raw water availability. I think that's a huge issue. I've been working on it for 25 years, and it still hasn't happened, so I won't, we get some more success, although we're, we're underway now, but we, we lack a funding source for that that's reliable, and we've had a lot of issues on that. So, Mayor, I hope you can talk to the governor, but our legislators have to get on board. It's critical, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Lot to come, and I think we can be very grateful. I know the city attorney's getting close to having a first draft, and I think without, without a city attorney like Mr. Gostad, this would be, you know, an impossible lift. So I think we can give him some thanks, and that he'll protect the city. You know, these are large investments, you've got to make sure that you're protected, and heaven forbid some type of default. So I think we appreciate all the work that, that you've already put into it, and you will be putting into it, and there'll be many discussions right here in the future with that, so. Any other further comments or, or questions? Mr. Weber, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I said it earlier this afternoon, this is an amazing economic development victory, fantastic. Of course, there's unintended consequences. I asked a number of questions earlier, I'll just add a couple now. I anticipate there's going to be an involved permitting process, especially around air quality. Is there any impact for JFK, for our airport? Anticipated.
Mayor Botenski and Councilmember Weber, that was one of the first buttons. Obviously, we had a project called Northern Plains Nitrogen that was kind of in a, the flight area, so this is on the other side of, on the east side of Interstate, away from any of those zones of, of concern. So all the zones, any zone of concern at JFK, all on the west side of Interstate.
Very good. So, good news for the airport, it's a little closer to town. I've, I've lived near a, a dog food plant. It was an old-school one, so maybe this is a more contemporary one. Any indication about smell? Because this is coming, you know, the northwest wind blows right over our town, so.
Mayor Botenski and Councilmember Weber, I think odors are always going to be an issue, and so that, that'll be one of the specific areas. They're going to get a Title V air permit from the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, and there's very good staff members on that, because we have lots of coal-fired plants, and so we have a strong division in there. However, odors are a different category, so we'll have to work through that to, to make sure that, as they've said, they want to be good neighbors of the community. And part of being a good neighbor is not only giving back to the community, but not having any negative effects like that onto the community. So that'll be another really good talking point for us all.
Thanks for letting me ask the questions.
Yeah, no problem. Anything further? Anything, anybody online?
Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Phelan, does this have any bearing on Northern Plains Nitrogen? I mean, if you're going to raise all this corn, you're going to need fertilizer. I mean, is it a way that these two can work collaboratively together?
Mayor Botenski and Councilmember Veen, I think it highlights that we really are in a sweet spot for agri-business, and Northern Plains Nitrogen hasn't moved forward in its current or alternative location. However, I think this project says that more agri-business is going to come, and I think with that natural gas pipeline, one of the limiting factors of a fertilizer plant was natural gas. And not only natural gas, but redundant affordable natural gas, and once this pipeline comes from west to east, it's going to open up a lot of agri-business opportunities. And if we're going to start growing more corn, I agree that we're at the end of the line on fertilizer, and so I think a fertilizer plant has to be located in our region.
And, and we may have to relook at our requested allotment of raw water from the Red River Valley Water Pipeline now, with these type of agri-business coming, and still having more for the future.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely a good point, and, you know, we're in those negotiations as well, so that'll be good. It's a tremendous opportunity to, to really have a ecosystem here with, you know, not only fertilizer, but byproducts, and looking at Red River, the bio-refinery plant as well, and their expansions, and what they can do with some of these byproducts, to really give us, you know, hopefully, one of the most eco-friendly businesses or agriculture parks in the, in the country, and be a model for, for other places. So, great opportunity, especially with the state's carbon capture as well, there's boundless opportunities to be unlocked, so pretty exciting. With that, why don't we, why don't we move forward to item 2.3?
COVID-19 update.
Mayor Botenski and members of the council, I'm Michael Duhits with Grand Forks Public Health, here to do a COVID-19 update. So looking at the past few weeks, our overall trends that we've been seeing are relatively steady number of tests, overall increase in the number of cases, an increase in our percent positivity, an increase in our deaths, as well as an increase in our vaccinations. So when you look at where the, where the COVID is happening, or where the COVID cases are happening right now, the areas that are kind of peaking right now are the 30 to 39 and 0 to 9 age groups. Surprisingly, the 20 to 29 age group has been relatively quiet for much of the school year, aside from some small increases right as school started, but they've been relatively quiet overall. A lot of the case activity has been in that between 30 and 60 age group, and the 0 to 9 age group increases new development. Looking at the overall, what the case rate looks like, it's been a while since I've provided a update to the council. So we were kind of following a sawtooth pattern for a while, where we'd have slight increases, then decreases, increase, decrease. We had a bigger decrease, and now we're back on an increase overall in our case rates. So each time, we've been right around 50 cases per 100,000, which is our max, or kind of the max between 50, 52, and then we drop down to roughly 30, 40 cases per 100,000. This has been a kind of a stark contrast to both the major outbreak that we had last year, as well as what we've been seeing in some of the communities in the western part of the state, where we have seen case spikes and then decreases, which I'll go into on the next slide, but it has been, you know, more of a real flat curve with the, with this latest increase in cases. Comparing Grand Forks to our peer communities in the state, Cass County's been the closest to us in following their overall trend. Lately, they have had an increase overall in the number of cases in the community, and that has seemed to persist. Whereas in the western side of the state and North Dakota overall, we saw a big outbreak in the, in the Bismarck area, and, and their residual is still much higher than what we're at, as well as Ward County has run higher than Grand Forks County as well. Moving over into hospitalizations, Grand Forks has seen a slight increase overall in the number of hospitalizations of Grand Forks County residents. Of a little bit more concern is the overall, overall number of impatients that we've been seeing at all, too. They've been keeping a relatively high census in the number of COVID impatients that they've had, but slightly more than half of them, it's generally been running, more than half of those are actually from communities outside of the Grand Forks area, so either into Minnesota or into, to a much lesser extent, into North Dakota. That said, overall, the Grand Forks increase is a little bit different than the overall case trend. I think what we saw as the peak was overall an increase in hospitalizations, particularly in the Bismarck area, where they did get hit pretty hard with a case increase, hospitalization increase, and, as well as a death increase. Overall, what we're seeing right now is still following a similar trend as what we previously have seen, where we see an increase in K, the incidence, or the number of cases, followed by an increase in some way, shape, or form in hospitalizations, followed by an increase in deaths. So we have seen roughly 12 deaths in the past month and a half, or two months. This is still a death rate that is lower than what we're seeing in other places, but the death rate decrease is only, when we look at the kind of the case fatality rate, the decrease is only about 10% from our peak. So there is still a risk to getting COVID and having it, having it cause death, as well as disability. Moving over to vaccinations, right now, Grand Forks has seen a pretty substantial increase in the number of vaccinations. We did cross the 50% mark a couple weeks ago, and we have been kind of powering past that. There's a good possibility that with the increase in vaccines to the 0 to, or sorry, the 5 to 11 age group, that, that could continue to boost us up. We're second only to Grand Forks County. It is still concerning to see Ward County so far behind, as well as Burley-Morton in the state. That could be indicative of, you know, longer-term COVID activity if we aren't getting people Moving into the 5 to 11 age group, I was very pleasantly surprised to see how quickly we've been seeing vaccine uptake in the 5 to 11 age group. So where we're at right now is about 11% of the population in the 5 to 11 age group have received at least one dose of COVID vaccine. That age group is about 5,500 people, it's roughly the same size as the 12 to 17 age group as well in the community. The 12 to 18 age group, we have seen, you know, similarly good uptake, particularly on the side of the state, where we're at roughly 58% of the population who have had at least one dose of COVID vaccine. The 19 to 29, we have been making progress in, but that's a lot slower, because it's a huge population group in Grand Forks County. Looking overall at where we still need to make progress with vaccination, the 19 to 29 age group is kind of that linchpin. Figuring out how to get better data in that group is still a challenge, but we are making progress. Because they make up such a large portion of our overall population, they're also making up a large portion of the people getting vaccinated. So we are seeing increases there. We did see some impact from the, from the policy at UND to incentivize vaccination. We saw some increases in that age group for a while, and we have added on that additional age group in that 5 to 11, 5 to 11 age group, which will help us hopefully get over that 60% threshold. And then the final thing I wanted to mention is, in the 70-plus age group, we've actually reached, the number of vaccinations in that age group have matched the estimated population in that age group. Just bear in mind, these are population estimates, where we looked overall at the population from the census compared to our overall population, it was about 4,000 or 5,000 people higher. And so even though it says we're at 100%, that doesn't actually represent 100% of our population, so it represents 100% of the population estimate from 2019. So our bottom line, we still are seeing relatively good testing volumes. That said, the increase in percent positivity is of concern. We have had a really strong start to vaccinations in the 5 to 11 age group. There was concern early on in the, you know, when we were vaccine planning, that we would see roughly kind of thirds, a third of people being quick adopters to getting their kids vaccinated, a third wait-and-see, and a third would be opposed. So we would still expect to see a continued strong start, at least for a while, in that 5 to 11 age group. 5 to 11 age group. And we are still making progress with getting young people vaccinated. Again, our case rate and percent positivity is remaining high. Our percent positivity, the utility of that is getting a little less useful, but it's still a metric that we are following, and, you know, we are seeing an increase. We're still following the same pattern with increases in cases, increases in hospitalizations, and increases in deaths, unfortunately. Skipping over to our threats, the biggest kind of one that we're looking at right now is the slight increase in hospitalizations in Grand Forks County. You know, I say that also recognizing that overall, in the entire pandemic, when we compare ourselves to our peer communities, we have been slightly better off when we look at death rate, hospitalization rate, as well as case rate, but still something that we are keeping in our eye on. With that, I am open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Doulis. It's been a while. Appreciate you having me back. Questions or comments for Mr. Doulis? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, to move on to three public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
3.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance, amending city code section 21-0215 relating to locations where licensed premises prohibited.
Thank you. I'm going to start by opening up the public hearing on item 3.1. Anyone here tonight to speak on item 3.1? All right, public hearing period is closed. Open up to council for comments or motions.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Weber, second from Mr. Kavami. Any further discussion, item 3.1? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
3.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance and final approval of amendment to zoning map to rezone the Meyer P O D concept development plan, amendment number one.
Thank you, same process. Open up the public hearing for item 3.2. All right, public hearing period is closed. Counsel, your wishes?
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Kavami, second from Mr. Veen. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to action items. I don't think staff, Todd, Mr. Phelan, any, any items that staff needed to pull tonight?
We're all good. I just would point out 4.0, we generally go right to city council, just for the record. You didn't see that, Akal, but we don't, Mr. Hodak doesn't see anything out of the ordinary on that one.
Thank you. Any items council wishes pulled from the consent agenda tonight? Mr. Weber?
4.1, please.
4.1. All right, anything? Anybody online? All right, so we would look for a motion for 4.0, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, and 4.10.
Move approval.
Got a motion, is that for Mr. Weigle?
That's correct.
Need a second then, we got a second.
I'll second.
Oh, there we go, Ms. Mock. So we'll give it, Mr. Weigle a motion, and Ms. Mock seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Let's quickly end, let's do 4.11, then we'll go back to 4.1. We just need a motion to introduce the ordinance. So if you could read 4.11 into the record.
4.11, introduce ordinance, preliminary approval to request to amend zoning map to rezone R4 multifamily district, lot 16, block D, Wilmer addition, located at 705 South 15th Street.
All right, if I could, a motion to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Kavami motions, and Mr. Weber seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 4.11 carries, that motion carries. All right, 4.1.
4.1, joint powers agreement with Grand Forks County for 2022 election.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you are? All right, perfect. Any further insight anybody needs on 4.1? I think Ms. Dorstad's probably the in-house expert on that item.
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Kavami.
Second.
Second from Mr. Veen. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. I believe that that carried 5 to 1 with Mr. Weber dissenting. All right, on to five information items.
5.1, investment portfolio summary as of October 31st.
Thank you. And moving on to six, citizen comments. Any comments tonight? Now's your opportunity, anybody here to, to speak? All right, citizen comment period is closed. We'll move on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is the vendor list as it's presented.
Got a motion to approve the vendor list. Mr. Veen motions, Mr. Weber seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pull the same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
7.2, minutes from September 20th, October 4th, and October 11th.
Thank you. Got a motion to approve. Mr. Kavami motions. You got a second? Anyone online would like to second that one?
I'll second.
All right, second for Ms. Dokler. All those in favor of the minutes, approve of the minutes from September 20th, 4th, and the 11th, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Mr. Phelan, city administrator comments, you got to bring some energy back in the room. I think everyone's ready to go home.
I just wanted to make note, Mayor Botenski, that the redistricting of the wards will, or, I don't know, I'm going to call it redistricting, the wards will come back on Monday, and I know Adam is planning to meet with some folks that were interested, so that, that's what was our plan this week, if people want to reach out to Adam and engage with him, he's willing to do that. And then I know we have it advertised, what the motion was, I guess, a week or so ago. So that's, that's planning to come to next week, Mondays. Adam's made himself available, he's around all week. If anyone has any questions or follow up with him, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, redistricting the wards sounds a lot better than rewarding, because, like I promised you, it's not very rewarding to work. Maybe for Mr. Jonison back there, but. All right, we'll, we'll move on then to mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dokler?
No, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, Mr. Weber?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we will move, Mr. Kavami?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen?
A couple things. First of all, I'd like to say again, congratulations to Dr. Wallace for the word that he got. That was great, well-received, a great individual to receive that. And then only one other thing I want to talk about, the Alara Center and the impacts that we've had in September and October. Had 56 events, 80,000 attendees through that time, and a direct input, or impact of 5.4 million without multipliers. So that was a phenomenal time. They said they just came through the busiest season the venue has ever had. And it, being a part of those meetings, you get to realize the total effort that it took to keep those events happening, with concerts going to football games, which is pretty phenomenal for all the work that was done. They've listed a number of the people that have been involved in that. I think we owe them all some gratitude, but especially I'd like to focus on the, on the Alara staff who helped make this happen. So just wanted to shout out to them.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Thank you for your work on that. I think it took 20 years, and it took probably getting the right team of spectra in there, but I think that the Alara Center is really hitting its groove and running at all cylinders. So thank you, sir. With that, Vice President Mock, any comments tonight? And thank you for, for attending this morning, really appreciated you having, having you there.
Yeah, thank you. I do think as we move forward with the development, it makes me a good idea to make sure we make clear to the public who they are and what they represent, and how much background information has maybe already been looked into. And I imagine we'll get more details on tax incentives and breakdowns of their investment versus the city's, but it might be a good idea to really break those numbers down for the public, so they can see exactly what we're being asked of and what the company is planning to invest as well.
Absolutely, thank you. Ms. Mock, Vice President Mock, with that, I'd say, I guess my comments, it's just very exciting, this project, to, to work on it for a year and a half, and to see it come through, and to just know the economic impact it's going to have to the city, it's pretty phenomenal. So I'm excited, a lot of work to do, Mr. Phelan and Mr. Gostad, and a lot of city staff realize that about 2% of the work has been done, and you're, you already feel exhausted a bit, but winds like this don't come around too often. So thank you for, for all your work, both you two and all city staff, really has come together on this one in a big way. So with that, that's all I've got tonight.[1769.61]